I will call our school committee meeting for March 23rd, 2023 to order. If we could stand for the pledge, please. Thank you. I will not need the gavel. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Introduction of members.
Charles Dunton, Blackstone.
Tara Larkin, Millville.
Tammy Lemieux, Blackstone.
Erin Donato, Millville.
Dan Keith, Blackstone.
Carrie Goddett, Blackstone.
And Jason DeFalcio, Superintendent.
Thank you, everyone. Consent Agenda A. We have warrants minutes of meeting for March 9th. Looking for a motion for consent Agenda A.
Motion approved.
Second.
Motion made by Dan and second by Tammy. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It's unanimous. Republic Forum. And school committee items. First item on our agenda is the transfer of $50,000 from E&amp;D to OPEB, which is, was approved at our town meetings last year. No, I'm going to say this wrong. Approved for us to certify that transfer after our E&amp;D is certified, which was done at our last meeting. So the motion is written here. If someone wants to read it.
I mean, sure. I motion to approve the transfer of $50,000 from the excess and deficiency fund to the Blackstone Millville Regional School District's OPEB fund in accordance with school committee policy DLC.
Motion made by Carrie and second by Dan. So just to recap again, this is the amount that we had committed to our OPEB to be paid out of our E&amp;D once it's certified. This is new. This is our first year. It was, it started at last year's town meetings, but this is the first time we're actually moving this money. Any questions or comments on that? All those in favor of the OPEB transfer as moved?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? It's unanimous. Thank you. And then we have a school, the school year calendar correction. Thank you, Tara.
Thank you, resident. Who told me about it?
We have to observe Veterans Day on the Friday since it's on Saturday. When it's on Sunday, we observe it on Monday. And so we're moving Veterans Day to November 10th, which is a Friday, leaving the PD day as it was. So there will be, the first two weeks of November will be two Fridays. So motion to approve the corrected school year calendar for '23, '24. Motion made by Tara and second by Dan. Any conversation or questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Unanimous. Thank you. And moving on to the report of the superintendent.
Thanks. Good evening, everybody. Just a couple of items under my report for this evening. The first is hard to believe, but we are in the middle, or a little beyond the middle, frankly, but of our school year. And you know that the, my evaluation, the dates run a little bit different than just the typical 10-month school year. So we tend to do my mid-year evaluation around this time, although I will say that it's really an evaluation and a check-in in terms of how we're doing as a school system, because the goals that are before you this evening are our collective goals that we've settled on as an overall district. So while I have the pleasure of reporting this to the community tonight, it really is a representation of the work that we've all been doing since the start of the year. So a big thank you to our team, who is, some who are here and others who are not, who have contributed so much to the work that we're going to talk about tonight. Last evaluation cycle, we tried something a little bit different at the end of the year in that we went to a fully electronic evaluation presentation and heard some good feedback from everybody that that was helpful in place of a large binder with a lot of tabs and all kinds of kind of flipping around and things. We tried to use that same format, keep it streamlined. We also worked to really pull together more high-impact pieces of evidence. So instead of having eight, nine, 10 pieces of evidence, we tried to kind of drill down three, four, in some cases, a couple of more, but to really show some high-leverage pieces of work that are happening across the district. So I'm excited to share that with our school committee and our school community tonight. Of course, everything starts with our blueprint, and I think we'll see that as we start to delve through the different pieces of evidence tonight, just the work that's happening in each of these areas as it relates to our five Cs that are very much anchored in all of our work. As recent as yesterday, we had our principal meeting at the high school and did a learning walk. And as a matter of fact, that's one of the pieces of evidence was a middle school learning walk we did, but the principal asked us, Ms. Fallis, to look for three of these five. It was critical thinking, communication, and collaboration in action in the classroom. And so, I mean, these are really very much used, discussed, and supported across the system. So for this year, I have a few focused standards that the committee will be evaluating me on. And as you recall, in October, we spent some time really kind of talking through each of these. And I know the school committee is very much aware of this, but I take the feedback from the committee very seriously and really lean into the conversations we have around these areas, because this is what, to me, I hear from the committee that, you know, hears from the community in terms of areas of importance for work. So while I won't read them to our friends at home, they are here for anybody who's interested to see like what are the specific areas where I am putting additional focus and attention. I also want to say that these are not the only things we're doing, clearly. There's a lot more than this involved in the day-to-day work, but overall, these are the areas where we're putting additional focus and attention. Our first goal is around creating a school system that works for everybody. This is a theme that I know the committee is very much aware of, and it really is a theme that kind of runs through all of our goals for this year. And we've made significant progress in this area so far to date. And I'm really excited to share a couple of pieces with our committee. And I'm just going to kind of touch on some of these a little bit quicker than others, and I'm not going to jump into all the pieces of evidence that are hyperlinked here. Because frankly, and Dan, you've said this repeatedly, which I've always appreciated, that like by the time it gets to this stage, you all have seen most of this, right? This isn't necessarily new information. But there are some key pieces that I do want to share as it relates to the work that we've been doing around creating a school district that works for all. And so the social studies curriculum work, I know the school committee is very much aware of the work that's been done by the curriculum committee to date. You will be hearing again from them in April in terms of some recommendations around next steps with curriculum, which we're all very excited about. The CELUS data, we just heard a great overview from Jill at our last meeting, a meeting before. And again, just as a reminder, that's the Social Emotional Learning Indicator system, and that's looking at how our students are rating themselves on essentially five different areas that are all anchored to research-based standards around social emotional development for our youth. We are doing a lot of work around diversity, inclusion, equity, belonging. Again, that all-means-all idea of creating a system that works for all of our students in that we have been doing some case studies that are designed for educators. And so I included here just a cover of the text in case folks were kind of interested in what that case study book is. And I did include one case study that we've done as a leadership team specifically around high expectations. Sometimes when we think about diversity, equity, inclusion, belonging, we tend to think specifically about racial diversity and ethnicity and diversity in that space. That's included for sure, but that's not the only piece of it. When we talk about creating a system that works for everybody, we're also talking about our students with special needs, or talking about our English language learners, we're talking about the middle-of-the-road student that needs a little something more to get him or her or them over that hurdle. And so the case studies that we have been reviewing really do a nice job of looking at all of it. And so this example here is one that was set around high expectations, which is something that is very much prevalent through the school system and something we focus on. So that you might be interested to take a look at what one of those case studies reads like and the focus is around. Our advisory training, which I'm going to jump to, I'm going to come back to number four in a second, sample evidence four. Our advisory training was something that I know, and I included it here intentionally because I know it was very important to our high school leadership team and the students at the high school. And so this was in response to some of the issues we had in the fall where some of our student leaders went out and trained their peers and worked with their peers around really developing a sense of empathy and how to be really just self-aware and aware of others and how others can receive or perceive us. And so the reason I put that forward as a piece of evidence was really to showcase the work of the students. I was really proud of them. They spent a lot of time working with Ms. Fallis on that and working with their advisory groups there. You'll see the students will come back up in a few other places as well. So there is some evidence there of their very good work. We have done, I have continued doing work with the Massachusetts Racial Equity Diversity Inclusion Task Force. Included in my evidence is a webinar. We host one webinar a month, it's the first Wednesday, for the entire state. And I had the pleasure of hosting and facilitating the webinar on working with school committees. And so I really enjoyed being able to facilitate a conversation with our Secretary of Education, with a few of our superintendent colleagues, with Dorothy Presser from the School Committee Association. She was one of my panelists, which was wonderful, and the chair of the Natick School Committee. And so the idea was really working collaboratively with governance and leadership around how do you tackle some of these challenging issues? The webinar runs about 90 minutes. It was definitely a challenge moderating. It was a very large group, but I put a sample in there of the script, so you could actually see how we set it up. And what's really cool about this is it's archived on the Superintendent Association website, and people can go in and watch them. There's a whole library there of tools and resources to help school systems work around and in the space of equity. So that was something that I wanted to share. Our school district, our leadership team attends those webinars the first Wednesday of each month, and the topics range from working with students, working with staff, you know, the school community and families, school committee, building coalitions of support, the leadership team. It's really good work that has been a lot of fun to engage in and help lead. We then recently, myself and Jill Fallis and Sam Yoder, our athletic director, attended the first cohort. The Attorney General's Office has set up trainings for superintendents, principals, and athletic directors. It's a requirement, but there are two-day trainings that are hosted by members from Northeastern University, members from the Massachusetts Interscholastic Athletics Association to really help tackle some of the issues that we've seen recently on our athletic fields and basketball courts across the state, not specific to BMR, of course. And so myself and Ms. Fallis and Mr. Yoder went to the first cohort, you know, that we don't like to wait. So we joined the first session a couple of weeks ago. It was a Friday, all-day Friday and all-day Saturday training at the MIAA in Franklin, and it was very well done. It was very well done. The facilitators were excellent. And what was affirming, I think, for us in BMR is that we really are on the leading edge of this work, and that was definitely evident in the session that we were in. So we were happy to be able to contribute to our peers, but also learn from our facilitators as well. So I just included a sample of that. And probably the most fun part of all this, part of this goal is to get our district out to the community and really help people get a better understanding of really who our students are. Because at the end of the day, it's about our 1,500 kids that we have the pleasure of serving. So I have, as you know, have spent time with various leadership, student leadership groups, and we have done a few different podcasts. And so I included just in there, you know, the student groups that I've had the pleasure of speaking with and meeting with, the number of views that the community has, you know, kind of tuned in to see, and some of the other activities that we've done to get our students out into the community, whether it's singing at our senior center, whether it's coming down and reading to our students at Millville or Blackstone. Our kids are really, and I know that you know this, but they're really amazing. They are amazing individuals that are doing incredible work. And so this is just one piece of how we're trying to showcase that. And for anyone who hasn't seen or heard the podcasts, I would strongly encourage them to go to our YouTube channel. They're all stored there. And you can just type in Charger Nation Podcast, it'll come up to the top. We've had, we've done three of them with the students. They are so insightful. Their leadership is amazing. It's just, it's very, it's very heartwarming to spend time in that space with those students and to hear them talk about our community, our schools, and the work that they do. And so that is highlighted there. Tim, if you wouldn't mind just clicking on number four, the BMRHS Men's Leadership Group? This is something that is really special, I think, and really important to me, not only as a leader, but just as an educator and someone who really loves and cares about kids. As you know, we've spent a lot of time in the fall talking about how can we work better and different with our, with our young men? We talked about our literacy levels, you know, the, our young ladies kind of, you know, reading at higher levels than our young men. We talked about our leadership opportunities at the high school being predominantly, not all, but predominantly filled with, with our young ladies at the high school who are doing great work too. But, you know, what can we do to really invigorate our young men and really get them involved in some leadership work? So Keith Ducharme and I have spent a lot of time working with a particular group of young men, there's about 10 of them, and really trying to think outside of the box about how do we kind of breathe some excitement around leadership into this particular group? So what's here, you know, you may look at it on the surface and be like, oh, these are some emails and some schedules, and it may not seem like a lot, but what's behind this is really awesome to see. Our, our young men from the high school, this particular group has gone out to our Blackstone food pantry, they're going again next week, to help organize, clean up the shelves, restock. They've done amazing work there. We have taken them into Worcester to volunteer at the Perro Center, which is a community center in a very impoverished part of Worcester. They've done a bunch of cleanup work. They've helped to deconstruct and reconstruct parts of an early childhood center there. They helped with Christmas gifts, holiday gifts, and packaging those. They helped clean up the outside of the building. It's amazing, the work that, that these young men have done there. We've also gone on, we took them on a tour to Worcester State. And for a lot of these individuals, they had said very candidly, they didn't think college was really an option for them, nor was it something that was on their radar. That was the first time that most of them had stepped foot on a college campus. And to get the career side, we spent some time at our, our ed hub at the Blackstone Valley Chamber of Commerce, going through some soft skills training, like kind of career training. They did some work with virtual welding. They got some additional technical skills training around manufacturing. And then we took them to the Waters Corporation in Milford for a tour with their HR people, really giving, giving them a chance to get out on the floor and see like this is what the work looks like, this is what we need, here's kind of an overview of that day. I will tell you, while all of those things are incredible, for me, the best part of all of this has been, we take them to lunch, like kids love to eat. And it's sitting down with them and breaking bread with them and having conversations and watching them interact with each other, watching them interact with the server, which doesn't sound like a big deal, but seeing like how they interact, their manners and, you know. They are an incredible group of young men. And so we're really excited to have taken this on. Now we're looking at how can we expand it? You know, this, we've only captured 10 students. This particular session where we went to the ed hub, we actually ended up getting a minibus and we like loaded it up. This was an awesome opportunity. We brought more students, we brought a bunch of seniors that are still working on their post-graduation plans, and we're doing a follow-up with those kids to the ed hub to actually link them with employers. So I'm really excited about this piece of the work. I think this is where the rubber hits the road. We can set goals and talk about curriculum and talk about instructional practices, and all those things are really important. This is what makes the difference in the lives of kids. And so I'm really proud of the work that's been done in this space and just how much the kids have taken to it. We're going to, I'm going to bring, I'm going to ask them to join us at a committee meeting in the spring, so you can meet them. And you probably know most of them, but we're a small community, but it's pretty awesome. And I will tell you, the first session we had with them, it was, you know, so it was around Thanksgiving. And again, I'm an elementary teacher by trade, you guys know that. So I'm thinking, well, we need an activity to do, right? Kids love to eat. So we had a video, I think I sent everybody the link to the video that we showed with them, I showed to them. We had lunch, and then I brought these like cookies and frosting and to make these little turkey cookies, right? And so here, the kids, tough, right? Tough, big kids. The high school kids are like, oh, we're not making this. This is ridiculous. And then they're like, what is, is that vanilla frosting over there? I'm like, yeah, yeah. Like, are those sugar cookies? By the end, they had these, you know, sprinkles on their cookies, and it just showed that, you know, there's still, you know, little kids inside, you know? And so I'm really proud of them and the work that they've, that they've done. So I wanted to share that as a, as a piece of evidence in terms of how we're doing the work in this particular goal.
Sounds like this might be a favorite goal.
It is one of my, yeah, for sure. It's one of the, and I'll get to work with the kids directly often, so this is something that I really, really enjoy. Kind of building on that, we looked very differently at our work with our team. So kind of our team cultivation and how do we continue to, to grow our staff, to keep our staff? And so we've done a lot of exciting work in this particular goal already as well. I just picked a few pieces of evidence here to share, but we have looked at our staff development really different this year. We have a lot of our staff PD is being run by our staff for our staff, which is very cool. And we have offered a variety of different optional PD modules for staff throughout the year. And so I included a few pieces of evidence here to show that. What we did as a starting point was look at how can we leverage our mentoring program? If you recall, we all talked about it at the end of my last evaluation cycle, like how can we kind of look at that a little bit different? How can we retain the staff? How can we kind of help grow them and keep those veteran folks that are doing great work continuing to grow and stay with us? So we looked at kind of getting two bites of that apple and started with kind of reorganizing our mentoring program and included in that a variety of topics that range from educator evaluation, learning walks, and, you know, what are administrators looking for? You know, what does that, what does that sound like before they walk in my classroom, while they're in my classroom, and after they're in the classroom? So we had a whole set, kind of a whole section on educator evaluation and feedback. We've done sections on English language learners, on special education, on working with difficult, you know, students and classroom management. And so we've had incredible attendance at a lot of these. The educator evaluation workshop alone had all the, over 60 participants. And it was a, it was a kind of a hybrid of new staff, and we asked their mentors to come with them, right? So the kind of the thought behind this was if the mentees and the mentors come, we're going to get our veteran folks that we really want to hang on to and keep and grow, and we're also going to get our new staff, and them hearing this information together could be very helpful. The session that I was able to run was in the fall. Jenny Remka and I did it together. It was on educator evaluation. And the part that, and I included that PowerPoint here. The part that, that I led, Jenny led the majority of that discussion, but the part that I led was the classroom visits. That's the part that kind of puts everyone's blood pressure up, you know, is when people come in my classroom, this is my learning space. And so we were really open about, like, look, this is what the conversation sounds like before we walk into your classroom. We're actually not looking at the teacher, we're looking at what the kids are doing. And so you could, you could hear a lot of like, oh, like particularly from the newer teachers, you know? We talked a little bit about what does the conversation look like after, and what does it sound like afterwards? I actually included in my part of the presentation, here's how I train the administrators on learning walks. They actually have the training materials that I use with the principals. So there's no mystery about it, right? Like that was the goal, was to try to take this, that kind of, that fearful piece out as much as we can to know that we're all on one team, we're all on one page, moving in the same direction. And so we've had some really good feedback from those modules. An exciting next step here that you'll hear about at the end of year, but we're starting on now, is we are partnering with Uxbridge and Bellingham. And we are actually going to be marrying our mentor programs together and working across district with our new staff and our mentors to really expand upon the teacher learning opportunities with that. So we're really excited about that. The other piece that I just wanted to highlight is our staff training for our full professional development days and how we've been developing those. We had our most recent last Friday, and we broke the day down into three sessions. The first session was about 90 minutes in the morning where principals and their staff were all together, you know, in their buildings. We then came together as an entire district and we ran various workshops. We had about, I think, Jill, was it like 15 or so? I think 15 different workshops. There were, there were two 40-minute back-to-back sessions that were run by our teachers, for the teachers, and then our staff signed up for the ones that they wanted to participate in, which was awesome. We then all came together for lunch in the cafeteria, and then they had their afternoon sessions and vertical planning. So the fifth and sixth grade teachers were meeting to really get into the weeds of making sure that our sixth grade teachers are ready to receive the students in the most meaningful way possible. There'll be more conversations that will need to happen. But we have a survey that actually is going out today, or tonight, maybe it's already gone out, I'm not sure, to get formal feedback from the staff on that, but the anecdotal feedback has been great in terms of teachers feeling how impactful that was. And then the last piece of evidence for those vacancies that we do have or will have for the second year in a row, we are doing a, myself and a couple of the other superintendents from Blackstone Valley have coordinated a Blackstone Valley Career Fair that will be held at Milford High School, which Jill has been working very closely with our principals around matching BMR swag and candy they want to give. We put our principals in one room together, and they get quite creative, we'll say. So we're looking forward to that on April 3rd. And so again, not a full comprehensive list of everything we're doing, but just some of the high-impact pieces of work happening around the cultivation of our team. Our facilities work is fairly open and shut at this point, which is, which is good to a certain extent. For evidence, I submitted the acceptance letter into the MSBA pipeline for the high school. I did include the school consolidation plan because that is still a work in progress, but it is something that clearly we all know is very much on the minds of all of us. And then I wanted to share, when I had a, I've had a couple of conversations with MSBA, our liaison, now that we have someone assigned to us because we're in their pipeline, about the work with MSBA. And that clock for us, that formal work starts on June 1st, as our school committee is aware, but we have not just been sitting and waiting for, did I say July 1st? I meant June 1st. I did say it right? Okay. June 1st. We haven't been sitting and waiting for that. Tara is the chair of our capital planning committee, and we've been meeting regularly and have put in trainings, have created videos, a video tour of the high school, we've set tour dates for our high school in person, and we're setting up some tour dates to get out and see some recently constructed middle high schools or high schools. So I just share those pieces to say to our community that we are very busy, although we're not formally in that like official start date yet. Our, our capital planning committee has been hard at work, still meeting. I think it's really, it's kind of been like the first Wednesday, I think, of every month we've been meeting. And has done some really good work in that space. It's funny, when I spoke with Jennifer Flynn as our MSBA contact person, you know, she's like, oh, you guys are kind of on cruise control, nothing to worry about right now. I'm like, no, you don't know how we work. We have a lot that we need to do before June 1st, when that clock officially starts ticking. So I just wanted to share, there I just shared a sample of one of the agendas. But again, I know that we update the committee on a regular basis on that, on that work as well. Our work around learning acceleration has been interesting. And we are making some really nice headway in many areas. And I'm gonna share specifically our middle-of-year student academic data. That's probably the best indicator of where we are with this. But again, some sample evidence pieces that I put forward for your review. And you'll notice some of these are not hyperlinked. It's because they were already hyperlinked or they're going to show up later in the slide deck. So you'll notice the social studies curriculum piece, I shared again because that is very much part of this goal as well. One of the important pieces of work that we have learned, particularly post-pandemic, I guess, is maybe how I would say that, is the importance of really rebuilding student, teacher, student, adult relationships. So our, our principals and our coaches and our instructional leadership teams have been very hard at work around building this overall sense and urgency and the importance of knowing our students. So I just included a presentation here and this, actually, this was actually done by a couple of our teachers for our teachers and one of our optional PDs. And that was great, that, that, you know, again, it was for teachers led by teachers. And it was all around strategies to use to help build relationships with your students. In one of our buildings, very, actually about a month ago, we had an activity, and I really appreciate that the principal did this. And she had the list of all the students that are, that these particular adults are responsible for. And each team of adults got a set of chart paper. And the directions were listed student name, write every single thing you know about this kid, everything. And it was eye-opening. You know, there were, there were kids that had 15, 20 things written and there are kids that had two. So very quickly, the, the adults that support these individuals were able to say, we need to focus on these kids. It is evident to us who we need to build deeper relationships with. And so what's interesting but not surprising, so I don't think anyone will be surprised to hear this. The students that our staff know less about are the students that told us on their CELUS data that they have a lot of concerns about them, their sense of self. And they are also the students who are not performing well academically. So, right, not like a huge aha, probably didn't surprise anyone around the table. And it didn't really surprise the teachers necessarily, but it just underscores the importance of our kids need to be seen, known, loved, valued, and recognized. And so, you know, we've been doing a lot of work in that, in that space, particularly like that, again, post-pandemic, as we've been trying to not get back to normal, because that's not the goal. The goal is to get better than that. Additional work happening in this, in this area. I included a piece of evidence when Jill and I meet with the principals, which is monthly. We meet with leadership team monthly, but then we meet with just the principals monthly as well. We rotate and meet in one of our buildings. The first hour of that meeting is for the principal to tell her story, to take her on a learning walk, help her, you know, kind of troubleshoot any particular issues that they're, you know, that she's working on. And so this was a particular piece of evidence from our visit to the middle school, which was really impactful. We're starting our second round. Actually, we'll be going back to the middle school in April for our next visit. So I wanted to share a little bit about how, you know, it's not just up to the principal or just up to the teacher in the classroom, but it's really the responsibility of all of us as a leadership team to support each other in improving outcomes for kids. I also included some work that we are doing around culturally responsive classrooms. I think what has been really helpful in this space is the, the kind of the switch has flipped. I think for a lot of individuals, that there are really good teaching practices that will help all students. Part of that is that idea of relationships and knowing what kids are drawn to, what excites kids about their learning, what interests kids about their learning. And so there is some work that is being done in that area. We also, I'm pleased to share, our enrollment is up. We were up to 1,520 kids, which is nice. If you remember, we were down to 1,468. So our enrollment is moving in a good direction. And our number of English language learners is increasing quite a bit. We're almost at 50. And so we're getting a lot of students, a lot of English language learners that are, that are moving into our community. So we're doing a lot of work with our teachers to help make sure that they are prepared to better meet the needs of our, our ELL students. So we're excited about that. Also included as a piece of evidence is, I mentioned earlier, some of the work that our students are doing at the high school. They have taken on the curriculum called The World of Difference. They were actually at the middle school today, training the middle school students around some of the diversity and equity and inclusion work that, that they are working on at the high school. It is, again, it has been really impactful and powerful to see our students leading in this space around being a district where everybody is welcomed and supported. So I thought you might have some wonderings about that. So I included the different facets of the program here to give you a kind of a sense of what they are and an overview of that. To make all of this work, it takes financial resources. So I did include some of the state advocacy work that we're, that we're doing. There is a lot. There's a lot of conversations happening right now with Representative Mike Soder, Senator Fatman. They've been wonderful. The Worcester County Superintendent Association has hosted a legislative lunch with all of our legislators. I included that here. I very intentionally did not speak at that event, but worked on all the behind-the-scenes stuff to get that in place. Helped coordinate with all the three speakers who are on the program to make sure that our message was aligned, consistent, coherent, and concise. Our legislators, I included all of the bills that they're working through. There are pages of them. So we put together a survey, myself, the superintendent from Northbridge and Hope Dale, sent it out to all of the Worcester County superintendents to drill down into the three main issues. They will be no surprise to you that most of them are financial. And so that when we presented to the Worcester County legislators, we came at them with one voice in a very clear and concise manner. And they left with our top priorities as far as legislation goes. So we've done a lot of good work in that space to help support the teaching and learning work. And that brings us to the teaching and learning work. So I will just run through some of the data quickly. I know I'm getting a little long-winded here, so let me, I'll try to kind of be brief. For those that are looking at this for the first time, this is our STAR data from our beginning of year to our middle-of-year. This is our English Language Arts aggregate data. So these are all of the students put together. And it's just our meeting and exceeding expectation numbers. So to really get a quick sense of how we're doing, if you go to the column all the way to the right that says the difference, you can see a very quick rundown of the growth in achievement. This is achievement. These are actually the numbers of kids that are moving into the meeting or exceeding expectations category from the beginning of the year. So you can see we've increased the percentage of students in grade two by 10%. 11% in grade three, 12% in grade four, 8% in grade five, 11% in grade six. It starts to drop off here. Seventh grade has increased 5%, eighth grade is flat. I'm gonna talk about the eighth grade in a minute. And then ninth and 10th grader showing smaller increases in their performance. But you can see, with the exception of eighth grade, there is movement in the right direction in every grade. If you think back to prior presentations, we had ebbs and flows. We saw an increase in one grade, a decrease in another grade, an increase in another grade, a decrease in the next two grades. There wasn't a lot of consistency here. Now we're seeing consistency across the board. It's not robust to the degree that we want to see it yet. But when you look at the growth scores, right, which is different than the achievement, you will see the kids are growing. So we'll talk about that in a minute. Math tells a similar story, but not as robust. Remember though, we are in the first year of a new math program, K-12. And so I just was meeting today with a group of middle school teachers. And we were talking about the need to get the K through 12 math teachers together to talk a little bit about what's working, what's not, and what's next with our new math program. So we will be doing that in the next month or so. But again, you can see collectively, it's progress, but it's not as robust as we want to see. But in every grade level, there was movement in terms of the percentage of kids that are moving into the meeting and exceeding expectations category. The not-meeting numbers, of course, we want to see those go down, right? So but from the beginning of the year, you can see those numbers in most grades are much larger than they are in the middle-of-year not-meeting. So in second grade, we went from 21% of the students not on grade level in math to now we're at 13%. A third grade went from 14% to 6%. So, right, the, obviously the idea is we want that number to be as low as possible. Again, grade eight is flat. We're gonna talk a little bit about that. I do want to draw everyone's attention that 10th grade does not have any students not meeting expectations at this point. So that is a big shout out to the high school math team who's doing a lot of work in that space. We also do, just to, to remind everybody, we do have a math interventionist that's working with these students at the high school and that's working with the students that needed to pass MCAS, that had, needed to take it again. So I just wanted to share that as well. And then these are the ELA results. So again, gives you a sense of the reduction across the grade levels in the percentages of students not meeting. You can see, again, we've got some challenges at the middle school. Particularly eighth grade is, is basically flat. But there's about a quarter percent of kids meeting expectations, about a quarter percent not in a whole lot of students in the middle, which is right where about 50% of our kids are. They're in that partially meeting category. So the next two slides show a really important story. So we looked at the achievement in the past few slides. This is actually the growth. So this is how are our students performing as it relates to all other students taking the STAR from beginning to middle-of-year? This is a nationally norm test. So our results are in the same bucket with all the kids across the country in second grade, third grade, fourth grade, et cetera, that take this exam. So you can see that our students in second grade are outgrowing 62% of them, which is, which is a significant number. That cut score, again, just more so for folks at home that are listening in, that cut score, you want to have your growth at least in the 50th percentile. That means that we're outgrowing at least half of the kids. You'll see in most of our grade levels, we're over that. Again, we have a sticky point in eighth grade. So we've got the bookends where we've got about a quarter of the kids meeting, a quarter of the kids not meeting, the majority of the kids just sitting in the middle with not a lot of movement. Mathematics shows a similar story, although not with the eighth grade. It shows that our students are actually doing better with, with our eighth grade math. You'll see that their SGP or student growth percentiles in the 52nd percentile. So it's nice to, again, see in every single grade level, our kids are outgrowing the expected growth rate. And for those that have been looking at this data for the past few years, we haven't seen data like this before. So that's good, you know, collectively overall. By and large, with, with, with the exception of the grade eight point, which again, I keep saying we're gonna talk about in a minute, I promise we will, we are seeing the progress in, in the, in the other grade levels. I included this slide to, to really help preface the next couple of slides. There's a lot of numbers there in the special education data is really tricky to look at because it's not the same group of kids. So what Jill did for us was she looked at the total number of students that are on an individual education plan at each grade level in our STAR data. But she also showed how many students were new and how many students were dismissed. So it's not apples to oranges, oranges, because, I'm sorry, it is apples to oranges, not apples to apples, because the data changes throughout the year. You have students coming on IEPs and coming off education plans. So this slide, we thought would be helpful to really show you. There are significant changes in grades two, three, four, five. In grade six, there were no changes. Grade seven, there were a couple. Grade eight, nine, and 10, there were, there were none. So this gives you a better sense of where that stands. There's a lot of numbers here. But I, you know, the overall gist is, and this we've been talking about repeatedly, there is a lot of work to do for our students with special needs. We, we know that. But again, one of the challenges we have is some of the students, not all, but some of the students that have exited aren't in here. But you can clearly see, we still have about half in most grade levels of students with special needs not meeting grade-level expectations. We have looked at various models. We've looked at this data from inclusion to resource and have found frankly, in some of our resource settings, the kids are doing better. And so we're looking at how can we work differently with our inclusion model to help the students in that setting? These are our math results. You can see that the students not meeting are, percentage-wise, are a bit lower in most grades than in literacy. So their number sense and numeracy skills are stronger. But this gives you an overall sense. It also shows you from the beginning of year to the middle of year. So if we look at, for instance, you know, eighth grade, we have 75% of students not meeting. These are students that are on IEPs that, that reduced to 60%, which is still far too high. We're certainly not celebrating that number, but I wanted to call that out as, as one piece to share. But then look at second grade, you can see we have an opposite issue where 20% of students were not meeting at the beginning. 37% are not meeting at the middle of the year. But again, if you go back to that slide in the beginning, you can see that we added four more students into students with special needs during the year than in the beginning.
And the reality is, the more a student with special needs improves and gets closer to meeting the standard, then they exit special education. And then that number only shows the new people that qualify. So it's, it's a weird, it's a weird data point because the, the more a student with an, with an IEP progresses, then they're not gonna meet the criteria for special education. So, you know, that number often will stay the same because you're talking about different people that are, you know, with different kids. Because the kids that improved are now part of your other number. And, and they come off this. Like your success almost hurts this number sometimes. I guess that's what I'm trying to say, but I, you know, that's how I go.
But I think grade two is a good example because with the addition of four, you can tell that that number skewed on the.
Right, yes. And where grade eight stayed the same, there were no changes, but they also had a 15% reduction in the number of kids not meeting. Again, no one's celebrating a 60% not-meeting goal. I want to be clear about that. But that, that's a great kind of yin to the yang that you're saying, Erin, in terms of like the changes in grade two.
And can you go back to the other side? So grade four had plus five and minus two. So really plus three, right? But different data. So what did I just say, grade four?
You said grade four.
So 25 to 30. So it's the same with the addition of the.
It's a, it's a, from that perspective, it's a weird metric. It's, you would almost have to only assess the student, like the same student.
You'd have to have a cohort.
Yeah, you'd have to do a cohort piece.
The not-meeting matches the percentage of new students.
It's, yeah, it's a, it's a, it's a strange metric. But we're always trying to find a way to report out on this because it's such an important group of students to us. And so what we do in between these assessment periods, Jill coordinates special education progress monitoring meetings with the grade-level teams in each of the buildings. And they look at authentic work. So they actually bring, the last round, I think, was writing samples. So they bring writing samples of all the students from the beginning to the middle. And they look at those collectively for patterns and trends in the student writing. That's just one sample. And they'll use like an open response for math. So they're looking at the writing in math, they're looking at a writing in literacy to try to figure out how to better. to try to figure out how to better support the students. But it's something we still need to get better at, we're still working at. But it's, it can be a tricky metric to report out on. That was why we thought this might be a little more helpful. We don't usually show this. We tend, we'll just show like the numbers, but this we thought would be really helpful because it shows the changes, like the ins and the outs.
Do you know how many students we have in fifth grade? We have 25 students with IEPs out of one...
There are five sections. I think there's five sections of fifth grade.
So about 125.
Yeah.
Twenty-seven, 28 kids, that's the big grade.
Thereabouts, yes, yeah. Maybe 130, I think that's the number.
That's our next one.
I mean, even eighth, I think there's only like 85 or 86 kids and 22 are special.
That's a big percentage.
Yeah, eighth grade has 106 students, 106.
Oh, I thought we just did it the other day, it was 80s.
It was 10, yeah, 106. So I know that was kind of a lot. The last piece I want to touch on is grade eight. I want to talk a little bit about what we've been trying to do with the eighth grade this And I would say very bluntly, with little success, unfortunately. It's not from a lack of trying. We are looking at how can we address, and I want to go back to these numbers, how can we address this? Like how do we, how do we get to accelerating the growth for our grade eight students, particularly as it relates to, they are soon, right, three months, they're soon to transition off to high school. So we have tried, and I want to be clear about what has worked too. We do have, I think you might be aware, of ELA interventionists and a math interventionist that have been with the district since the beginning of the year. And they've been doing, and kind of pullout supports for students in grade six, seven, and eight. But the students they have been working with are not students that are on IEPs. Those students are being supported by the special education teacher at their grade level, so these are for their general education students, but that needs some additional support. We have tried increasing the time with those individuals. We recently looked at, in February, putting in a interventionist just for grade eight that would help to support some of the behavioral challenges, some of the academic challenges by doing some pullouts, some tutoring, and some therapeutic work with a selected group of students where that would be very helpful in supporting them. We have started back up another six-week after-school tutoring program with transportation. We have about 20 students, 17 or 18 or so participate regularly, that we're targeting to try to support that work as well. We are seeing marginal success. It's clear, you can see it here. I know that the teachers have been wrestling with some of the challenges in grade eight. The academy in some respects has really helped because the first two periods of the day, there are 20 less students here. So the classes have been that much smaller for the students. So if you visit a classroom in periods one or two in grade eight, you will find about 14 students. So that's small, that's good, that's a good thing, we want that. We are still not getting the outcomes that we are looking for. Go ahead, Erin.
And what is being, what are they using that time with 14 students?
It's cool, yeah, yep.
Maybe that is the time where a lot of this work needs to be done, just in that smaller setting.
Yeah. So what they've been doing is core instruction. So you, you know, they've been running their math, their English, their science, their social studies class at that time. Actually, the first, the first period is not, I think it's the second period that is a core class. So I know that some of that has been happening during that time, but not all of it. So they're not just doing the intervention at that time. So one of the things we have started talking about, in addition to bringing on the interventionist for the eighth grade team now, and we had a candidate just today, actually visiting the middle school, so I'll have to see how that went, but is looking at next year and looking at what do we need to do different for our freshmen? And so we've talked a lot about putting additional clinical support for our freshmen. The kids need it typically anyways, but I think this particular group may need some additional support on top of that. And then also finding a way to provide just for our ninth graders, a full-time ELA and math tutor to do work with the kids during the school day. We need to do something different, and I think it's evident by looking at the results here.
And that's the same group that has struggled for, you know, they've been, they've been on our radar for years and years now, and it's just a matter of, what's the attendance percentage for this group? Is it higher or lower than typical groups?
Average, no, it's average. Although I am worried because I, my feeling is, and I could be wrong, but when they get to the high school, that will drop off. The attendance will get more challenging in terms of keeping some of the students, I think, engaged. One of the things I think that we can definitely do sooner is starting a, or facilitating that leadership group that I was discussing earlier at the middle school level as well, to try to get some of those students plugged in to something kind of bigger than themselves, particularly through service. So there's still a lot of work that we need to do there, but we are in the planning stages now, not only for trying to kind of mitigate what's happening this spring, but also how do we get ahead of it for the fall? But I will say that as far as the growth is concerned, the ELA growth is not strong for grade eight, but the math growth is pretty much where the other grade levels are. So the kids are moving in the right direction in math from a growth perspective. But still, if you look at their achievement, there's only about a third of them at grade level. So we've got, we've got to figure that out. And it's challenging because when you visit the classrooms, it's a smaller class, and there are five teachers on that team. So when you look at the classes with everybody back, the classes are still around 20 students, which isn't huge, and with, in the absence of those students, they're about 14. So it's not the classes are enormous by any sense. So we, it's really trying to find the balance of, I think, the relationship building, the instructional side of it as well. There is, there is a piece where the administration is struggling getting the students to show like the efficacy around their work. They're having a hard time getting them to really buy in to the schoolwork to start as a, for instance. So there is, there are some challenging pieces to that, and that's why we included in these interventions, some of the therapeutic pieces that would be helpful.
Have you ever analyzed the time it takes them to do the test?
Yes. So for some of them, it's about...
Sometimes that is very telling.
Four minutes, six minutes.
It's like 22 questions takes you 37 seconds, you're like, oh, the scores might not be how well they can read or do math.
So there's some of that. So where the other grade levels, when we met, because we did our middle-of-year data meetings with all the instructional leadership teams, really stood by the data, like really stood by, this is how our kids are doing. Some of the middle school data was of concern to the instructional leadership team, feeling that like this really isn't a reflection of how particularly the eighth grade can do. And again, it wasn't all of them, but you can see the amount of time. Some of the kids were asked to go back and like, hey, let's give it another shot. They, you know, they said, no, we're not going to do that, and they didn't retake it. So they're dealing with some of that oppositional piece too, which again, is why I think the therapeutic component can be very helpful in the instructional work as well. So, you know, we are continuing our work with that, with that group of students for But it does stand out, and I wanted to make sure we addressed it specifically.
Any questions for Jason on his middle-of-year? As always, it's a plethora of information.
Does that class, do they know they're behind, struggling?
Like collectively as a group?
Are they made aware of it, that by standards of, you know, two through 12, or, you know, K through 12, whatever we want? I mean, I mean, you don't want to look at a class and say, hey, you guys are really behind, but do they kind of know? Is it brought to their attention, some of these numbers? Because it's, is there a pride factor here?
They see their individual...
Or lack of pride, for I should say.
Results. Administration hasn't brought, the middle school administration has not brought the kids collectively together. But the kids have, you know, they get, they can see their results.
And MCAS shows state, right? Doesn't it compare your student to the state average too?
Yes.
Right? I guess they might see...
Right, I don't mean to take a shot at them like they don't care, but I mean, I'm just saying, some, and some, I mean, having someone who teaches in my house that, you know, there is a certain amount that does not care. So that's what I'm saying then.
Yeah, and we're trying really hard to get to, we got to find a way, right? So like our, that's kind of our approach is like, how do we find a way to, every single student is really important to us, and every single student matters. So like, how do we find a way to hook them and engage them? And so that was some of the thinking around this different kind of intervention approach where we had someone to do some academic tutoring, someone to do some therapeutic work, kind of a small group setting. Because what, what will happen is this, or those individual students, is going to become overwhelming, I'm sure it already is academically, and it's like those, I'm going to tune out and turn off behaviors increase because they recognize the fact that they're so far behind. And so we're trying to like address that. It's, the challenges we've had in our summer programming, our acceleration academies, our after-school programs, is we have wrestled getting kids to stay. So their parents will get on board, yes, so-and-so can stay, they can be there, and then the administrators go to kind of gather them at the door at the end of the day to bring them, and they just leave and get on the bus. So we, it's hard to, like, some of them need, some of them, the plain fact of this issue, some of the students do need more time on learning, not all of them, but some of them do. They just need more time. So we've created those opportunities. Some of them have taken advantage and some of them haven't. So we've wrestled with that. As a matter of fact, our high school teachers are running our intervention after-school program here. We have one of our English, very good English teachers at the high school who is teaching our after-school, middle school English program. So we're trying, like, we're trying these different ways to get the kids engaged, we're thinking they can build some relationships with the individual, could be a good bridge, or rethinking orientation for the freshmen this year. Ms. Fowler is spending a lot of time on this to think of a way to like get them team-building, relationship-building, like you matter, you're important, what you do matters, getting them plugged into each other, like to the class as a whole, and starting some of that team-building work, like rated orientation. So we've talked about a lot of that, like trust building, and she's looking into a lot of different opportunities there that would be led by some staff, but mostly the upperclassmen to say like, hey, this is, like, you're on our turf, this is kind of how we do things, we all really care about each other and our work and our school. So they're trying to do some of that differently. We're definitely not giving up. We just have to keep thinking creatively and trying as many things, because after-school might work for some, summer might work for others, tutoring during the day could work for some, but for others, if you take a kid out of his core math class to do tutoring, that's really problematic because now they're going to miss their core instruction. But some kids are, like, they are behind enough that that's okay, like build the foundational skills. We will get them caught up on those other components. So it's not a one-size-fits-all. I hope this is making sense. Jill, do you want to add anything to that? I know you've been a great thought partner in this as well.
Well, I just think it's taking a look at those kiddos, do you know, in the areas, and how best we can... And the teachers.
Yeah.
So it's not just the students, that's important as well.
It's a lot of work.
Yeah, and it's important, and we're not giving up. So we're going to keep at it. And the teachers aren't either. They're, you know, we just met with them today, here, and they're, you know, they're really, they're really trying, like, we're trying to find different ways. Sometimes a smaller class is more challenging. There can be less places to put your friends that shouldn't be together. It's harder to move some people around, but...
Any concern to their eighth grade field trip, like behavior-wise, or has been any, I don't even know how many kids signed up for it, but...
I haven't heard any, any major concerns yet.
And the teachers are chaperoning, correct?
Yeah, and I'm sure, I'm sure that, my sense is, that there may be three or four students that, you know, maybe don't get in the mix of that, or don't go, or something. But over, like, the overall concerns, I haven't heard any at all. As a matter of fact, I know Mary's been meeting with the staff regularly about that.
Thank you so much.
Yeah.
Like I said, always a plethora of information.
And if there's anything, when you're going through this, that, you know, that you want to see more of, or that's missing, or just let me know, and I can send it out to the whole committee if I miss something. In an effort to try to streamline this, I also, I hope I didn't inadvertently leave something out that's important to all of you, so just let me know if I did that.
Everyone received the email with the links.
Okay, perfect. Next, I would like to move on to a request to the school committee. In your packet, there is a job description before you for a 12-month position. It is a position realignment. It is not a brand-new, full-time equivalent position. As usual, we are trying to find, you know, the same dollar to spend repeatedly for different things. And so this is another example of that. And what I'm requesting of the school committee tonight is that we take the existing Director of Learner Support Services, and we take that existing position, and we redesign the position, which is the job description that's in your packet, to an Assistant Superintendent slash Director of Student Services. I think this is important for a few reasons. One, I think from a school district perspective, having an appropriate chain of command is critically important. Two, frankly, the work that our Director of Learner Support Services is doing is this work. So this description was fairly easy for me to write because it's the work that's being done. And the third part of it is, it's just using existing resources. It's not new money, it's not a new position, it's just a realignment of dollars that we are currently spending and have in our budget. So for me, it makes a lot of sense, particularly as we're rounding out our team. We have our new Director of Finance and Operations with us tonight, which we're very happy, Denise, started Monday. I think it makes sense to round the team out in this capacity.
And I will add that, as Jason mentioned, as a district, it's important, when Matt left last year, my first, one of my first conversations with Jason, I had said to him, I said, we can't lose that, we worked so hard to get an Assistant Superintendent in our, in our district. And it is important, and I think more than we've recognized or appreciated, Jason has taken on a lot of that work since Matt left last summer, and Jill is already doing the three-page job description. And Jill is already doing the three-page job description that you had no problem putting together. The work is already being done, and, you know, we need to call it what it is. And, again, keep, keep that position here. It's very important to have that chain. So I appreciate you recommending this, because there should be someone sitting over there. And we all know that Jill's already doing this work, so...
Can I make a, want me to make a motion to merge the positions?
I think what we need is an approval of the Assistant Superintendent/ Director of Student Services.
As a, as a, is the motion to merge the positions?
Well, we had Assistant Superintendent...
But that was a finance direct slide of, yeah. I was going to say that was slash...
Right. So we're just...
That was a different slash.
Can I make a motion to merge the Director of Student Services into the Assistant Superintendent's position as well? Is that how, is that what we're looking for?
So I think I'm looking for approval of Assistant Superintendent/ Director of Student Service Position as written.
As written.
Yeah.
That's not what I'm saying.
Because I don't, I don't know that we want to use the word merge.
I think we, yeah.
I don't know that we want to use the word merge.
Is that what we're doing, or?
No. Because...
It's a different title.
We're changing, yeah.
It's a different title, yeah.
Well, I'll make a motion to approve the Assistant Superintendent/Director of Student Services position.
All right, motion made by Dan.
Second.
Is there a second? Second by Tammy. So just for further discussion on that, I wouldn't want anyone to think that we're striking a Director of Student Services position as it has been in this district. Things do ebb and flow, but this is going to be the title of our Assistant Superintendent position.
So slash, not merge.
And I think, yeah, I think, and I think the reason it's a slash, not a merge, is because when, when, so the Assistant Super position was not here for many years. I mean, when I got here, that position, there was no one in that position. And I think because we're always so cognizant of finances, and we have always kind of made this Assistant Super be a slash. They've always had, well, I mean, it's only been Matt, right? So...
Well, we had Dave Thompson prior to him.
Oh, right. But so he did, but he did Assistant Super, and he was like, had that curriculum...
I think he was Assistant Superintendent/ Director.
Curriculum piece.
Maybe it wasn't Director, it was...
It's sort of, we are, we're always double-dipping, is what I'm saying.
And we still are.
And we still are, right. I mean, if you look at a soup, an Assistant Superintendent description in most other towns, cities, it's a very different position than what Matt held and what we're proposing Jill, in this case, this position. Because they have that other specialty area that we also need. And, and it does strengthen the, you know, the leadership, and I...
We just wear multiple hats in this district.
Yes, multiple hats.
It's graded.
Which doesn't allow you to kind of use a generic Assistant Superintendent description.
Okay. Any other questions, or?
I guess the only question, oh, sorry, Dan.
No, that's fine. I was, just to be clear, I was just making sure I had the wording right.
I know.
It's definitely two positions. We just happen to have the talent and expertise in the system.
Already here in front of us.
Already here to be able to...
We were searching for an Assistant Superintendent/ Director of Finance.
Yeah, yeah.
And then we shifted that to, I don't remember. We shifted that to a few different things.
We are maneuvering to be effective.
Shifted it to Denise.
We are maneuvering to be effective and cost-saving at the same time.
Yes, that is right.
So this, this, it was sitting in front of us the whole time, and we had the business side on our minds, and this is meant to be. So, Effective July 1st.
Yes.
Okay. What were you going to ask, Tammy?
I was surprised it doesn't have anything about curriculum. I know, I know that Jill, in particular, already serves on a lot of... Well, I do think, I do think that...
We're missing two pages of what she does already.
I'm just saying, when you talk about an Assistant Superintendent, almost always includes a curriculum piece. Well, so that's why it was, that's the only reason I asked about that. And not that Jill's not already doing that piece also. She's usually the leader of every curriculum team, I don't know, whatever, however we want to call those.
What other, what other schools have is an Assistant Superintendent/ Director of Finance, Assistant Superintendent/ Director of Student Services, Assistant Superintendent/ Director of Curriculum. They have, they have multiple people doing it.
Tammy, I think what happened is, this is only half the job description, the other side didn't print.
We know it's in there. All right. All right, so all those in favor of approving the Assistant Superintendent/ Director of Student Service Position?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? It's unanimous, thank you. And this will not be posted? This is... Congratulations, Jill.
Restructuring the position.
Thank you for sticking with us. Because let's just be honest here, Jill has been here longer than any of us. And this is well-deserved, so thank you. Soon, we will have a nameplate for you, and you will be up here.
If we can fit it, I'm going to have to...
She's like, nobody told me a seat change was involved with this.
And Dan's a hugger.
You're the next contestant.
You think I'm bad.
I enjoy a challenge.
It can be Jill PG.
Oh, thank you so much for that.
That concludes my report.
Okay.
I will do the business office report. Yes, just quickly. So soon, Denise will be doing these, of course, but didn't want to put her in the hot seat for their first week, although I think she would have been fine, frankly, and probably encouraged it. But in your packet, there are a few documents underneath the business office report. The first, as you know, the last school committee meeting, we, the school committee certified our FY '24 budget, and then had asked for us to go back and keep working on our numbers. So we have done that. So in front of you this evening, you have kind of the next iteration, if you will, of what we're calling revenues and reductions. So we are looking at, how can we put forward a budget that meets the needs of our blueprint, that meets the needs of our students, but that does kind of two different things in getting to a number that we can kind of work with, and that is manageable for our communities, because we, you know, work very closely with our towns. So we looked at, how do we increase, what are some ways of increasing revenues? And what are some ways of kind of reducing the budget? So you're kind of pushing one switch up, and you're kind of pulling the other one down at the same time, so to speak. And so what we've come up with for a draft is, on the revenue side, increasing our excess and deficiency usage by $100,000, increasing our use of circuit breaker by $250,000. There are two grants that we have written, and I, they're not included in this number, but I wanted to put them on here, because I actually think there's an opportunity for some offsetting to happen, if we are awarded one or both of these. We have a Student Opportunity Grant that was through the Student Opportunity Act. And there may be an opportunity for us to use some of that. The grant itself was for $350,000. We can't supplement the budget, I'm sorry, supplant the budget, but we can supplement possibly with that. So we may be able to use some of that to offset. And also Karen Young has written a mental health support grant for $100,000 that we could use, again, to offset some of our counseling costs at a tune of $100,000. So there is a possibility for us to have additional dollars. We did not include them in the number, because we haven't been notified of that yet. But I wanted to put those out there as a possibility. But overall, the increase to our revenue side, as this draft stands, is a $350,000 increase. So that helps. Then for our reductions, we've done a ton of work over here. This is still a work in progress. But our Worcester County Retirement Assessment, if we pay the assessment charge a full right away at the beginning of the year, which we can, we actually will get a reduction of $20,000 in the assessment itself. So, I mean, these are, this is the level we're at now. Like, this is what we're looking for. So we will pay the assessment 100% upfront, so we can take that $20,000 off. It's like when you pay your car insurance all at once, which I do not do, but if you did, you would get probably a savings there. Our health insurance and dental insurance, we are still negotiating with, but I'm thinking that we should have a savings somewhere around $235,000 total. We are almost at the end of that negotiation, but we are making some nice headway there. We are also looking at three positions that are currently vacant. None of us love this idea, but there's, but people aren't in them either. So there's not a reduction in force in terms of people losing any position that they're in. Our district social worker position, while we hate to do that, and as recently as last weekend, we had an incident on a Saturday that Jill Fowless, Jill PG and I were on Saturday and Sunday to deal with, with student and crisis, that would have normally been our social worker. That's okay. I mean, we know how to do that work, we've done it before, and we'll do it again if we have to. But again, there could be an opportunity, maybe with the mental health support grant, if we get that, that there could be something we could do there with maybe counselors on call, or that kind of thing. So we're thinking very creatively about that. And then we have an unfilled STEM and World Language position at the middle school that the school committee approved in November. I'm super disappointed this year, we have, still have not been able to fill those. It is not for a lack of trying. And they are in next year's budget. So we could leave those, we could zero those positions out and take them out of the budget. The other thing that we picked up that was in oversight was OPEB. OPEB is not an operating expense, it should not be in our operating budget. And it was, it was in that overall number. So we can't have that amount in an operating budget, and then ask the towns to vote separately on it as a different warrant article from the budget. Those are separate items to be voted and approved. So we were able to take that out. So if you look behind that sheet, you will see the preliminary revenue and assessment sheet. The total budget is now at $29.7 million. So if you recall, that's down about 900, the total overall impact on the budget is $915,000. That brings the overall increase to the towns, Blackstone at 5%, and Millville at 7%. So we're still not where we need to be, but we're getting closer. And the numbers, I would, would hope the committee would agree, look much better than last time. But we are not done yet.
Can I, when you say we're not where we need to be, so we are actually right on par. We're, we're, over the last three or four years, actually, we've given the town reductions.
Yes, yep.
Let me ask you, with these three positions that are, that may be cut, because they're not filled anyway, how many, there's other positions that we eliminated because of promises to the town, because the funding was not...
Three.
Three, so this would be six then.
Yep. And in case anybody is wondering this, and not to the committee, but to the community, I have been asked directly the question, well, the student enrollment has decreased, so our FTE count, our full-time teacher should decrease too. What's that looked like over the past 10 years? So we, in the past 10 years, have had a reduction in 400 students, 404 specifically. And we've had a reduction of staff of 22. So that's about 23 kids in a class. So if anybody's wondering, you know, the school department is maintaining their staff, they just have less kids, and it's costing us more money, that is not true. We have reduced our FTEs. But to your point, Dan, this budget has six positions, three that were ESAR grant-funded, and then three that are locally funded.
That other point you brought up, where, you know, we're maintaining staff with losing students. It's, in ideal world, if you were losing 40 students, you would be losing two classrooms in the fifth grade, and you could eliminate two teachers.
Yep, yep.
But it's not quite how it works. It's, you know, you, you lose maybe one or two in one grade, another in another grade, and it, so it is, it's easy. It's an easy equation if you just think all the kids are sitting in one classroom.
Exactly.
That's not how it works.
No, and even with that, we still have, over time, reduced the, so, you know, and I'm mentioning that to the community so that they understand, it's not like we're maintaining everything and asking for more resources just for less kids. That is not true. I'm worried that that narrative may have been out there, so I wanted to address it directly.
The, the opposite of that narrative is you'll have people complaining that there's 35 kids in a classroom.
Sure.
So it's all lose-loses, either way, so...
So I wanted to give an update on where this stands. We are also still, we have quite a bit of advocacy we're doing right now. The House Ways and Means Committee is entertaining proposals to increase the local aid. I think everyone would have seen that. Yeah, increase the local aid to help offset the minimum local contribution costs. I just find that interesting, because you could just not increase the minimum local contribution costs instead of increasing the minimum, you know, local contribution, and then increasing the local aid. It sounds like we're kind of moving the same pot of money around, but we'll see where that lands. So that, when I say we're not necessarily where we want to be, I should be more specific, Dan, so I'm glad you asked me that specific question, because I know there is still work happening in that space as well.
Right, that's good.
Yeah. And we have a regional school association meeting, legislative meeting, on Monday, April 3rd, with our legislators that represent the regional schools, to continue to push this issue. The local, the regional school districts are, are being heavily impacted by this. The minimum local contribution increases across the board, so...
We are not alone.
No, we are not.
Our towns are not alone.
And the next update underneath the business office report is, Tammy, this is really more so for you, because I think this is your last meeting, but we, one of the, in the last meeting, we talked about looking at the function code reports, and getting a really good sense on where we are with each of the function codes, in terms of the overages, or where we're, where we're healthy and running in the black. Denise is working on digging into the 1,000 series and digging into the 4,000 series. I know we've done updates all along, you know, as we've looked at these, and I've shared out various places and lines where, explaining why we're over where we are. But Denise is going to work on putting together a comprehensive update that we'll share with, with the committee where that is, and the why behind that.
I'll be sure to watch.
Yes. But this is what it looks like in terms of the function codes themselves in the overall budget at the end of the fiscal year, as it is now, is at the bottom. So just wanted to show that differently.
What is the 1,000s? It's like the overall title.
That's school committee superintendent lines, some of the insurances are in there, I believe. Most of the insurances are in the 5,000 series, but I think some of them, particularly, the prepayments on the retiree insurance was, for some reason, was in the 1,000 series, so I think that was one of the issues. But, but I, I know that Denise will drill into the, into the weeds, Tammy, on that.
Come back anytime.
I'll watch from the couch in my PJs.
Seems to be the thing to do.
Yeah, we just heard that.
Yeah, we just heard that.
Yeah. Have a glass of wine while you do it.
I don't drink.
Tea?
But you can, you'll get a sense of where we are in the other, just the general function codes. And so what will be asked is for school committee to approve us moving to zero out the function code lines that are in the red.
Thank you for that.
Sure. And that concludes the business office report. If there are no questions.
Any questions? So moving on to facilities.
Hello.
So industrial burner came out on March 14th and they replaced the air diffuser. And since then, the boiler, boiler number one has been running without any issues. So knock on wood, that problem has been resolved. When we put up the tennis nets, we noticed more cracks in the tennis courts. Some of them do appear to be new, and you can tell that because when the crack appears, there's no woven mesh fiber underneath that they used to seal the cracks when Premier Seal Coating came out to do it. There are some old ones that did pop up, and those are obvious that those are ones that he tried to patch. So Ray from Premier Seal Coating reached out to me this morning. He said he'll be out Monday, Monday morning to look at the tennis courts and see what he can do. One of the cracks, you can tell, are kind of like pushed back together and it pushed up the coating on the tennis court. So it's kind of like a little bubble. So that's going to be addressed. They're perfectly usable. Nothing's sticking up where anybody's going to trip over it or anything like that. So, yeah.
We weren't on the courts last spring, right?
We were not.
So, okay. So they haven't even been used yet since, technically for a season, since they're used probably for phys ed and?
Right.
Recreational.
Yeah. We won't lose a season. They'll be able to play on it. If he makes, when he makes the repairs, I'll be sure it's after the season's done. And of course, April and May aren't the best times to do it anyways because you get the rainy season. So courts need time to dry.
We've heard that before.
Now I have to chime in.
I just wanted to bring it back up, you know, just in case you forgot.
Now I have to chime in. Did anybody get ahold of Matt Erinworth? Because I believe he gave us some type of guarantee on this at this time last year. First, it was too cold for several months and now we're going to hail the rain.
And it was, it was too cold.
I will gladly call him.
Yeah, I think we should get him in on this.
Fight down for a game of tennis.
Last Saturday, last Saturday, we started working on the softball field again. And I spoke to the coach yesterday and she's said that she's never seen the field look so good. So.
They also didn't use the field last year, correct?
No, they did. It was just very hot. No, everybody used them.
Was one of them at Roosevelt? Maybe the boys were at Roosevelt?
So we moved the playoff game down to Roosevelt for wheelchair accessibility and such. So yeah, now I just got to spend more time on the boys' baseball field. And this Saturday's not looking good. It looks like it's going to rain, lots of rain. So, but we'll get on it. It's usable. They've been practicing on it. Let's see. Yeah, Monday morning, I received a phone call first thing in the morning saying that the intercom system at the high school was not working. Neither was the bell schedule. So I went down there, pulled the plug, repowered it, booted it back up, and it's been working since. But it is something that we probably should be looking into upgrading because, as you know, for emergency purposes, it's very important that we can communicate with the classrooms. So I'm reaching out to try to find companies. I reached out to the Massachusetts Facilities Directors Board that they have, where you can reach out and find out who other districts are using for vendors.
Alexa?
Alexa.
Google.
Yeah, it's like Google.
Set an alarm.
From one room to the other, you know.
Oh, yeah, yeah. Cell phones. Cell phones.
I feel like lots can go wrong when you're broadcasting through Alexa in a high school.
Emergency situations.
There has to be something simpler than what we have from the 80s.
Right. So we'll be looking into that. And Millville Elementary School, I literally just received a text saying that they got most of the materials, or an email, I should say, that they got most of the materials and April vacation should be a go to get started on this project. They're going to focus on the heavily traveled area by the student, for the students, so that they want it to fit with the school regular, it's almost school day. So that's a good thing. And that's all I have. Any questions, concerns? We also started putting together the track and field equipment, moved some of the mats up onto the track. I'm looking for more pallets to put the mats on. As Chuck knows, that area floods out, so we want to keep the mats off the surface.
I asked someone today if they, if we could get some plastic pallets donated.
Yep.
But I don't know. I'm trying. If not, go with wood, right?
Yeah. Well, for the season, we're going to use something for the season.
Yeah.
Were there covers to go with those mats?
There should have been. There should have been, come with it.
Yeah, okay. I wasn't sure. Because I know, like I said, we're supposed to get rain this weekend. I only put one mat up there in the meantime, just so we can get it out of our way to get to all the other equipment. And yeah, so they started putting the hurdles together today too, so.
I think the only thing we did not get was the discus. They were constantly backordered.
Okay.
And then, and then eventually they just canceled our order.
Yeah.
So I think that was the only thing that didn't come in.
Yeah, the starting blocks came in.
So let's see, look.
We're going to have to find another, yeah.
Another vendor.
Yeah. We looked at actually quite a few.
Pretty important what they're using.
Let's see if we can.
It's like, people won't even use that for practice at other schools.
If you have some ideas, I'd be happy to. We looked into, I think, two or three different ones and they, the shotlets were fine. Like, we got those in, but we just couldn't get the discus.
Are the nets up yet?
Yes, we put the nets up yesterday.
It goes along with like the shortage of, you know, marshmallow or something like.
Oh, yeah, like a random, we couldn't get a discus.
It's big.
Yeah. We did get the javelins though, right? We did get the javelins, right?
We had everything with the discus, yeah.
That's what's important, the javelins.
Yeah, those terrible javelins.
I heard there's like 70 middle school kids doing track.
Yes, there is.
Do we have enough coaches?
So we, so we have a good problem. We have a very good problem in that I need to meet on Tuesday, I think it's Tuesday, with Neil and the athletic director to figure out all the transportation because we have so many kids. I like that problem.
When you drive to BMR at 3:00 in the afternoon, it is an amazing sight to see the number of kids that are out there.
That's great.
Finally.
So how many coaches?
Who's our track coach?
Nick Deletto is still doing it, I believe, and they have a new Mrs. P. Pelland, Mrs. Pelland, or Ms. Pelland.
Jack Keefe is one of them.
Is Jack still doing it?
Yep.
I think there's an eighth grade teacher doing it.
There is, yeah.
Yeah, Mr. Rosendale.
He recruited like nobody's business. Mr. Rosendale, yeah. His recruitment, some of the teachers I'm meeting with today said they would run track if they, the way he recruited the kids for that. His energy was fantastic. He's got a ton of kids on the hook just by the way he.
Have we considered their warm-up being running to the high school?
Police escort.
How much money did we save if we have a jogger?
I will jog them over happily.
Two times every day.
Well, we stripped the flow on, summer speed one direction.
They can block traffic.
Yeah, they flash the bar, right?
Yeah, it is great. It's spring seasons here and the athletes out there again. It's awesome.
It is awesome, yeah.
Do we have a baseball coach yet?
Not yet.
We have a JV.
JV, working on varsity.
Mr. Yoder has been filling in in the meantime.
JV, not middle school? Is it JV baseball or middle school?
I don't know. I thought it was JV.
I was informed, the, I know you're asking about baseball, but I was informed the softball side of the house was going to be a middle school JV kind of team. I don't know if that makes any sense.
Yeah, I'm not sure about baseball.
Middle school has a baseball, Teddy Greenstein is coaching. But I don't know if that's a slash JV. I don't believe so. That's just middle school.
Might be a separate high school.
Maybe I'm misspoken. I always refer it as JV varsity.
We could definitely have a spring athletics update.
Yeah, that'd be good. So do we have a middle school, if he's teaching, if he's coaching middle school?
It probably is a middle school team because I know they were talking about possibly bringing up some eighth graders to play on the varsity team. So it's probably a middle school.
So is that the coach we're speaking of then?
Yes.
The one varsity.
We don't have a varsity, we don't have a varsity boys' coach for baseball, yet.
But all of our other spring sports teams are fully?
Yes. Yeah. Coached, coached up, whatever the term is.
Yeah. So, so you have two middle school coaches for track for 70 kids.
Yeah, maybe. What is that teacher's name?
So this should.
Can we get him to recruit for every sport?
But he did say there was another teacher.
Three.
And then it can be.
How many people are at the high school?
Rosendale.
A high school team, they have like 30 kids and.
I think collectively between the two, I heard there was about 110, between the two schools, there's about 110 kids.
They just have to balance the coaches.
They always practice together, don't they? They always run joint practices, don't they?
Yeah, they're together. Well, because there's so many activities, right?
Yeah. So I'll meet with Sam Tuesday and find out what they, what the actual design is.
You need someone that knows how to run.
Because the other, the other thing is the transportation, like to meets and.
Yeah, it's not.
Yeah, yeah. Some of the sports last year, I think it was cross-country where, you know, like JV or middle school was canceled, the practice was canceled because the coach had to go to a meet with the varsity.
Yeah, we can't do that. Yeah, no, 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 I agree.
And they do have different meets for track, so it's important to.
I don't want that. And I, and I want to keep the, the numbers here to feed into, that's a really big deal. So we'll find a way to make sure that that doesn't happen. In transportation, I don't, I also don't want there to be a mindset of, well, we've only had one bus, so we're only taking one bus to kids. Like, no, no, no. If we have 70.
So what's happening this week?
Kids, then we need to, we're meeting.
Practices have started.
Meetings.
Has a schedule, I think they have four meets scheduled and, you know, a lot of the meets are held here. So, you know, that's like, they usually tell the kids, don't come in.
Well, practice shouldn't be canceled. The kids should be there helping each other.
They should, or they get their practice, you know, the meets don't start till 3:30, so the kids should be like out there practicing from 2:30 to 3:30 and then maybe help with the events.
We've been running the shuttles, the late buses. We've been, all types of transportation to help with this. A lot.
Like you said, a good problem.
It is a good problem, yeah.
Thanks, Scott.
You're welcome.
And then the last item, and there's been a couple of changes, so I appreciate your patience as I kind of go through these. You have a couple of facilities requests in your packet. One is for the Blackstone Millville Elementary PTO. However, there've been some changes. The Blackstone Fire Department withdrew their request after we sent the packets out. So you can rip that. And then we received a request from Mr. Dunton for a track and field clinic that just, it just happened to miss the package. So I have a copy for you here. If you want to take a copy of that, and.
Scott, the, I'm going to be using.
We also missed.
For the track on Sundays.
Dave Eisenberg.
I mean, what if someone is like running some rally that we don't really.
Yeah. There's another, Dave Eisenberg.
She wrote it down.
I was a middle school principal.
Not another, but we can promote him.
Gentlemen, I was a middle school principal. Do I need to use that voice?
You may need to.
That's not a voice I'm familiar with.
All right, so we have BM, PTO.
Yes, then we have Chuck had put a request in.
Why don't you have a copy?
Get the key for his request.
I don't know what's going on over here.
Get the key.
Mr. Hebert, sorry. And then Dave Eisenberg put in a request in on March 22nd. So we just, one of the, one of the drawbacks to getting the packet out early is sometimes you miss some of these requests. So I'm gonna.
What is this? Bike rodeo?
He sent a little email with some information.
Bike rodeo.
It's a bike safety thing. Training program? I'm not sure what the training, is that the right way to say that?
Is this enough?
Program?
I don't want to reinvent a wheel, but can we add a line on these that says, a description of use, a request?
Purpose.
Purpose of request.
Something of that nature.
Yeah, whatever you prefer.
Not, I have no issue with any of these, but like Chuck wrote track and field clinic. That's, you know, so we know what it is.
I feel like maybe there's a page.
Yeah, usually they write it down. What brought it my attention was the Blackstone Fire Department, but it was just nothing.
It's a three-page, it is three pages.
That's exactly.
I wonder if this changed.
I thought they were going to have a chili cook-off or something.
I just wanted to know. This is like, out of everything we do, this is the thing that hangs us up at every meeting. I need a better system for this.
Well, I think when it's like the PTO, it's like, okay, this is a PTO event, all right. But if Chuck, I mean, if Chuck wasn't Chuck sitting here and it didn't say track and field, like what do you, what is he using this for? He could be using it like for anything.
Yeah.
Do we want to approve it? It could be a smoke shop setup or something.
But when that Pee Wee football team came to us, we knew what they were doing.
Well, that's because he came and talked to us and had a whole.
Well, they wrote it down. I think that most people did what Chuck did. They write it down quickly. It's just there's no actual line to write it.
I agree, a little note.
Yeah.
It's like the fire department request, you don't really know what they were trying to do.
They wanted to just, they wanted to do some outside drills with the equipment.
Right, but how do you know that?
Oh, we had spoken with them.
Why?
Right. No, it's not, you're right. It's not on the, I'm redoing this.
I thought it was.
Letting everybody know.
Apparently they knew this was going to be an issue and they withdrew their application.
Okay, so we have, we're looking for motions for.
I just have all of this. Do we have any liability with this bike rodeo? We could worry about? It's going to be fine. Anyone else think that's a concern?
We won't be using the track or the tennis courts.
Do you have a bunch of people driving bikes? Well, they're teaching bike safety, so it should be safe.
It sounds like they're going to use the parking lot behind the, behind the locker rooms.
Yeah. Yeah, I don't think it's like a, I wish you didn't call. It's like.
The name is misleading.
Right. It's like when Todd Schaefer holds a petting zoo. Like, I think that confuses people, right? With, but it's like they're just holding the equipment, like the music equipment. It's called a petting zoo. That's what they call. I think the bike rodeo is misleading. They're not riding and angling.
Yeah, they're not doing stunts.
Teaching them how to fix his bike, you know, kids' bikes and bike safety. I'd be happy to get more information on the bike rodeo if you all would like.
I think it's explained.
Has this all gone through the calendar vetting?
Motion to approve the three facilities requested, unanimous.
Motion made by Dan. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Tammy. Her last second ever. Dan and Tammy. We had discussion already, so all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? Unanimous? Thank you. Be safe, everyone.
Facilities report.
So moving on to school committee forum. We didn't have our student today, so please share any.
Prom tickets are on sale. Dues must be paid for the juniors and seniors.
What days left?
Prom, April 28th.
$65?
65, yep. Dues are $30 per year, so if you're a senior and you haven't paid dues yet, it's $120.
And you can't buy a prom ticket until you pay your dues.
Yep.
Empty Bowl was last Wednesday. I heard it was very successful.
I think it was like a record-breaking.
It was awesome.
Nice.
Nice.
Great. I sent my kids, bought their tickets, and I, I don't know if it's true or not, but I was, it was just like, I didn't get soup, they ran out. Well, that's, I mean.
That's why it's called Empty Bowl.
Empty Bowl. That was your dinner. So, what else do we have here?
NHS is planning induction sometime in May. I don't know the date of that yet.
Spring sports started this week, practice-wise, as you just said. Any other updates that we can think of?
I did want to just, um, ask for two things, um, just that, on the facilities, the PTO thing, um, the, the dan, this event is a dance, I'm not on that elementary PTO, but I did overhear or read comments that there's not an actual father-daughter dance, like they're doing a family dance this year. To clarify if anyone's listening that is interested in the details, that's the route taken on that. And then, um, Jason, I know BVT is sending out their acceptances. Do we know numbers yet on how many kids?
Um, we had twelve students accepted.
Okay.
And, um, we had, uh, six students apply to Norfolk Aggie.
Apply or accepted?
Apply. Six applied to Norfolk Aggie, twelve.
Because they weren't accepted or they had originally applied? Were they rejected from BVT and then applied there?
That I don't know. So, um, the ones that, uh, of those, I denied most of them because they have, uh, the Norfolk Aggie, because they, uh, applied for the fabrication program. BVT has metal fabrication. So, if you look at their course descriptions, they're the same. The Department of Ed will probably overrule my decision and, but we, I did, I did not approve them, but they're applying anyways.
Is that, the acceptance at BVT, is it, uh, how does it compare to previous years? About the same?
It depends. Year to year, it's a little different. Um, the, the number of students they took this year is, is a lot lower. Um, usually it's around twenty, somewhere in that ballpark.
Smaller class, so maybe it's a percentage-based.
Could be.
But according to them, there's no.
Let's go back to our data for the eighth grade.
Yeah.
But according to them, there's no.
They don't do it that way.
That was so, that was our sense as well. So, they accepted twelve of fifty-two.
Fifty-two applicants from eighth, so half of our eighth grade.
Half of our eighth grade applied to BVT.
Wow.
And they took twelve. Um, of our academy students, I am, I'd have to check. I want to say four, I think four applied, and two are going to go. They got accepted. That was it. The rest are going to the high school.
And that's what, twenty? I know that academy completely swayed one eighth grader who was sixth and seventh grade. That is where they were going. They wanted BVT, and after doing the academy, it was.
Yeah, they're going to the high school. We had, we had forty-eight applications, seventh grade applications to the eighth grade academy.
Nice. How many seats will we have?
Well, we can have as many seats as we would like, but we had forty-eight that applied, and, and it looks like as far as the same kind of rigor of the coursework, about half of them, you know, could, could, you know, definitely enroll in the high school level courses, but we couldn't house.
We have two sessions.
We couldn't house as many as we want.
Could we have an afternoon and a morning?
We can do, we'd have to look at the scheduling side of that, but I think we could try to be creative on, I just don't know what that would do to this, to the master's schedule. But that's where the, kind of the numbers stand right now. So, it looks like if the Department of Education overturns the decision on the Norfolk Aggie students and they're accepted, we would have a eighth grade class of around ninety, ninety, eighty-eight, somewhere in that ballpark.
And finally, for me, um, I did not submit papers, so I will not be on the ballot. However, I, um, am willing to be a write-in. I just had, I missed the date, so it was just a personal error. I did pull papers, but I just hadn't turned them in. So, um, if anyone would like to write me in, feel free. Um, otherwise, my seat, if, if I say this wrong, errand correct me, um, if it goes unfilled, I can remain in it.
You stay, just like Jane did last year, until people were, would be appointed.
Till someone like.
Till you're appointed. But if you're, if, if someone gets enough write-ins, and I don't know why the number seven is in my mind, I could be making that up, then you're offered that position, and you have to go get sworn in. And, um, unfortunately, the way it worked out this year is we have three seats on the Millville ballot and one on Blackstone. So, with that being said, this is not Tara's last meeting, but it is Tammy's. So, I just want to say goodbye. It's been a very quick eight years, but I.
Six.
Six years?
Yeah, I took Joey in once.
Yes, you did. So, what I do remember is, is Tammy coming in, in the time of need, you know, for her town and this committee, and never looked back. And you've been here faithfully for everything we've needed, multiple committees, policies, we're going to still need the recap on that, some red lines. But your commitments haven't gone unnoticed, and the work you've helped with will continue without you, but you will be sorely missed, so.
Yeah.
What will you do with your Thursday nights?
I don't know, I'm sure I'll find something. But I do, I do want to say thank you to everybody, um, that I've served with. This has been a great committee. I've learned a ton. You know, I think, um, Jane earned her, earned her chairship money those first couple of years, trying to rein me in, control my hand gestures and fiery temper at times. So, um, I have definitely grown as a person, and I, you know, I did learn just so much being in this spot compared to being a PTO mom or a teacher on the other side of it. So, um, I hope that, um, my service, um, was beneficial to the district, and I look forward to kind of doing some stuff as we go through this building process as a little old citizen.
Looking for members for.
I know, except the meeting on the night that I'm working, so I'll have to figure that out.
That can change, yeah. We can accommodate you.
So, but thank you, um, for, uh, you know, all the good years here.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you, Tammy. Does anyone else have anything for school committee?
What's it been, like, Tammy, you were appointed for, wait, a joint appointment to fill in a position, right?
For Joanne Watson, yeah.
So, has it been, what, six, six years?
Six, yep.
I remember that first year.
Sure you do. I'm sure you remember every town meeting.
Now that I think about it, I think I got my demeanor from you with the hand motions and.
I literally watched my first couple of meetings, I was like, I'm a lunatic.
No wonder why we got along so well. No, it was, um, it was, yeah, it was a pleasure serving with you for this year and working with, uh, working with you on the other end of it. And I just remember that we, we, we were part of a group that made history in our first Supertown meeting.